... We're gonna get that one. It's gonna be on the bottom of the table. So I missed the minute. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time. It's just there. It's gonna be in the middle. It doesn't have to be second time.[854.11]
Through an RFP process, request for proposals, and chose Spin. And it's, I think, gonna be a great partnership. We've got a signed agreement. We can work closely with them. We launched this at the campus of Dixie State University today. We had about 100 scooters there and at least a similar number of people there to help us launch. And they're pretty speedy, aren't they, Adam? Yeah, it feels faster than 15 or whatever miles an hour when you're on them. Anyway, it's, it's great. They will be around and we, we will try to get the word out, communicate as best we can. These are very much like bikes in terms of where they can go and the, kind of the regulations, rules of the road. They can be on sidewalks in St. George. They can be on streets in St. George. And so, there could be conflicts. We want to make sure everyone's watching for them. We encourage people to wear helmets. These are for 18 years old and older, correct, Mark? That's, those are the rules of Spin. And so, we will, we'll hope for the best with that. Hope people will be careful. You will see at least 100 scooters starting today out there, probably another 100 or two, three over the next few weeks as they're able to roll them out and as people want them. So there, it is planned to have 400 of these orange and black scooters on our streets and sidewalks here soon. We had a bunch of students awfully excited about it today. These are app-driven, not literally. App is, app managed and paid for on your smartphones. And so, anyway, please do literally watch for these and make sure we're careful out there.
Were you riding one of those scooters, Mayor?
You bet.
Was it fun?
You bet, yeah. I, I hope we have some close to City Hall, Mark. Mark's busy, but I hope we have some close to City Hall Spin scooters.
We'll have some at City Hall.
Oh, sweet. Adam, we're, we can go to meetings at the county on scooters. Okay. All right, well, now, after-
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Could I do one more quick-
Oh, please.
-pre-agenda item?
Yes.
So, here in the city of St. George, we are so fortunate to have public safety departments that are just miles ahead of anywhere else. Our police and our fire departments are staffed with some of the best people. And I noticed that our fire chief just walked in the back. And I'm gonna brag on him just a little bit. He's got some great news. I'm excited for him. I know he's happy. He's a new grandparent, first-time grandparent.
No way.
Today, son and daughter-in-law had their baby, healthy baby girl. So, Robert, congratulations on being a grandparent and, and to your son and daughter-in-law.
So, Michelle, that means he is really old.
He's older than dirt.
He is older than dirt. And we can say that 'cause-
We're the same age.
We're the same age.
But you only have like seven more to catch up to me and a few more to catch up to John.
Yeah, I got two and a half. So, tell him to get, you know, get going.
But it's the best.
One other thing about Robert, I moved here 44 years ago and Robert was my neighbor. And he was always in trouble then. I don't understand it. He seems to be doing pretty good now.
Well, he kinda is still, but-
Oh, okay.
Big boys and their toys, right?
Was that a boy or a girl again?
A girl.
A girl. Awesome.
Congratulations, Chief.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, now we will start. On the first Thursday of the month, we have comments from the public at the first part of the meeting. I haven't received any forms. We ask people to fill out the white forms if they have an item that they'd like to talk about that's not on the actual agenda. So, these are kind of just your own topics. Is anyone here wanting to make a comment that's not on the agenda today? They just came and wanted to let us know something that was on their mind? Okay? Then seeing none, we'll go on. Adam, let's go to the consent calendar.
The consent calendar is presented to you as discussed with Item C being deleted. I would make a quick note about Item J. This is the purchase and option agreement with Tech Ridge. The date in the agenda says May 31st. This is a big project and we brought this to the council a number of times to extend this date. We're seeing a lot of progress. We're having weekly meetings with the developer. A lot of things are happening. If you've been up to Tech Ridge lately, the old airport, there's, you know, the road's torn up and there's a lot of infrastructure going in. Things are happening there. What we want to do is we just want to change that date to September 30th. Is that correct?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
That is correct.
I wanted to make sure I had the, the latest date. We're just gonna change that to September 30th. That gives us enough time to work through the summer, get all of the issues worked out on the zoning plan, the development agreement, and then we don't have to keep coming back and, and changing the date on the purchase and so. And that, that's perfectly fine.
And Mayor, I will admit, in staff meeting today, I did suggest September 31st. And then someone reminded me that. That's right.
So, with that change, staff would recommend approval of the consent calendar. Again, for those in attendance, the consent calendar contains items that are administrative in nature. They comply with all city orgulation, ordinances and regulations. I'm having a hard time speaking today. I apologize.
You want to speak Spanish instead?
That, that might be easier right now, but, so we would recommend that these items be approved by the council.
Council, do you have any questions? Again, you received this in your packets, all of the, the background documents, support documentation.
Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion that we-
I'd like to make a motion.
Accept.
On Item K?
Okay.
It's a, has to do with a hangar lease, Mayor, and it's to move the hangar. And I want to clarify that, that there is not an existing hangar on this property. It's, this applicant has a, has a lease on a particular spot and he wishes to change and move that site due to some soil conditions, but it's not a movement of a hangar itself as yet.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions about that? Okay, go ahead, Betty.
All right, I would like to move that we accept and approve the consent calendar with the change on J, Item J, to September 30th. Second.
We have a motion by Betty and a second by Michelle. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Adam, and staff for preparing those. We'll go on to Item Three.
Okay, Item Three is a public hearing in consideration of an ordinance for a zone change amendment for the Ledges, residential plan development. There are three purposes of this amendment. One is for a vacation rental project, the second one to redistribute the densities in the project, and third is just for some minor topografical and clerical corrections. And papers messing everything up. Let's get back to the inning. Okay, so the ledge is located out there off of Highway 18. The entire development's just over 1,000 acres. Here's an aerial of the property in question. This is the way the ledge looks now. This is their master plan. They have these lighter yellow and darker yellow colors. The lighter yellow represents areas where they would like to put in up to two units and the darker ones, three to four units. What they want to do is, these areas right here that are yellow right now, they want to change these over to the lower density. So, they've got three areas here that they're requesting to change. It won't change the number, the total number of units for the development and it's just lowering the densities for those. Another item that they would like to do, and this is the clerical changes, there's some, just some minor changes. When, when they come in with the plats and they get everything figured out as far as where the lines are gonna go, there's a few changes around. And also, they know the location where the fire station will go, which will be down here, which was moved. And the park was moved as well. The third item that we're here to talk about is the Thorn Tree Short-Term Rental Development. This is the location of where it will be. It's right across the street, Ledge's Parkway from the clubhouse here. And, and it backs up against what the Winchester Hills development. This will be a short-term rental location that has already been pre-approved. And they came here earlier, at a earlier date to get that area approved for short-term rentals. They plan on putting in six, or 76 row houses and 112 courtyard units. The row houses will have garages on them. And here's kind of where it's gonna go in the development. Here's the clubhouse here, Ledge's Parkway, and it's just kind of sandwiched in between the Parkway and the Winchester development. For this development, here's just kind of a closer look of the site plan. They do plan on putting in 31 RV parking spaces. They have noticed that the Escapes, a lot of people come with their, their RVs or their, their toy haulers, and so, they wanted to make a location for them to keep them so they don't have to keep them on the streets and keep them out of the way. Here's just another close-up of the other side of the development. The row houses go around and then the, the courtyard ones are in the middle. Here's a close-up of the courtyard ones. The idea is all of the units that surround the pool, they will have access to that pool. So, if an entire family reunion, let's say, wanted to rent out all of the units, they would be able to and have their own private pool, which would be, which would be nice. Here's some of the development standards that they are required to adhere to for this development. They do meet all the requirements. The only item that is not on the site plan is they will need to cover 53 of their parking spaces. They don't show them covered, but staff will make sure that those get covered at the time of development. Here's just a general look of what the development will look like. It'll be a combination of two, one and two-story units. Here's one of the courtyards areas, and there's another picture. We did take this before the Planning Commission. They did recommend approval. There were three items, three conditions. One, that the site plan meets all of the planned development requirements. Two, that the final platform Thorn Tree Development, she'll have a note on it indicating that short-term rental, residential rental properties are permitted. And three, that the enclosure of the pools will be required to meet the zoning regulations and also the current building code regulations. And if you have any questions?
How many short-term rentals do you say? I missed that.
It's, it's 112 and 76, whatever that is. Let me go back to that.
I'm sorry.
You wanted to know how many total?
Yeah, 188.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Finance degree, you know.
That's, that's why I chose not to do that. I can't do that quick math stuff.
Carol, on the issue of RV storage?
Yes.
The number, and is that still part of this approval?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Are there any conditions, any restrictions?
Yes, I, I apologize. I was going to mention that and I just kind of got into the, into the subject. The applicant did have a proposal when they, when they came to Planning Commission. They did have a proposal to put in RV storage spots throughout the development. They have since pulled that item and so, this, this does not, we are not talking about RVs at all, RV storage spots. There, the Thorn Tree Development does have some spots for some temporary RV storage for the, the people that stay there. But no, this, this item, the item, or the item dealing with RV storage areas has been completely pulled, so.
So, that, those were, that were presented to the Planning Commission and that's completely-
Yeah, it was presented to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission did put, they did table that item, but since then, the applicant has actually pulled that particular portion of this amendment from, from the table.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Carol, Council? Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here and would they want to say anything?
Good evening, Stacy Young, representing the Ledges. I think Carol did a great job, as always, explaining the, the project, so I'll just yield my time to anyone interested in commenting unless you have questions for me now.
Questions for, for Stacy? Okay, for now.
Stay close.
Thank you. All right, if there are no other questions from the Council at this point, I'll open the public hearing for anyone who may have come to offer any input on this item, number three on our agenda. And when you come forward, if you'd just state your name for the record.
My name is Jerry Edson. We are in Winchester Hills, right alongside the, where they're planning on building these. And I just wondered if there's any kind of a buffer zone between our property line and where they have to build a fence.
Okay, can staff comment on that, Carol?
I didn't mention it, but there is a requirement, 100-foot buffer for buildings between the Winchester Development and the Ledges. And so, there, there's 100 feet, if you look on the site plan, that's 100 feet. This is the edge of the development. There, there is 100 feet between there and where the buildings begin. They will have a fence on the property line to separate the uses. They will be required to do a solid block wall.
But that meets the requirement of the buffer that was mentioned?
Yeah. The, the buffer that was agreed to was 100 feet between development or from a building, so that, that does meet that requirement.
Thank you.
My name is Floyd Smith and I live in Winchester Hills, just one block from where this development is gonna be taking place. And I couldn't read the map that, that was sent out to us, and so, I went down to the, the office here and they gave me a lovely map in which I can read because I've got poor eyesight. But anyway, the reason why I'm having a little concern is, is that it says there's 20 acres in this piece of land here that they're gonna be putting, 187 units in 20 acres. Now, if you look over where the, the units are right now, there was, there was, it's a 35, almost a 36-acre unit, and they have 158 units. So, there's gonna be twice as many units on this 20 acres as they have on the acres along the highway here. That concerns me a little bit because I don't know whether it's gonna be two or three or four stories or just what we're gonna have here, but I don't know how they can put that in and still have room for roads and everything else in 20 acres. If somebody can give me answers to that, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. We'll see if we can answer that for you before the end of the discussion. Sir?
Good evening. My name is Robin Ford. I'm a resident of the Ledges, living along the Fairways Corridor. I only have two brief comments. First of all, urban planners know that when density jumps up, like what is proposed, three things happen: crime increases, noise increases, and property values decrease. Secondly, I do not know when the original environmental impact statement had been completed for the Ledges, but what is proposed would require an amendment to the environmental impact statement. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I would say one thing, you know, Jimmy, you've lived here a little bit longer than I have. Density's increased up there significantly since 50 years from ago. And so, you know, all of us, when you look at St. George, I think of the density, you know, probably many of us in this room wouldn't be here if we just kept the same density we had. So, just a little perspective there. But in terms of, I can't address Carol or Sean in terms of the environmental question raised there, and maybe we can address that.
EISs are required when you have federal funds that are paying for a project with a private development like this. They're not encroaching on any sensitive lands or there's no protected species right there, so there would be-
Not applicable.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? And we still will try to have staff respond to the density comment a few minutes ago on the acreage.
The overall densities for this new development is, it's around nine, is that what you said, figured out to me? Okay. It's around nine units per acre. That section that it's in, the orange, is, the density is, it's over four units per acre. And there wasn't, they have, they have a cap on their overall number, but they don't have a cap on each individual one as far as developments.
So, it is within their overview to be able to do that?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Okay, any other, any other comments during, for this public hearing? All right, I will close the public hearing, come back to you, Council, for any discussion? Any other questions in your motion when you're so inclined? Ed?
Yes, Sean, you mentioned the I, the IIS, the impact report. When this was, the project was initially put forward, we were concerned about the Snow Canyon Park and any of structures being able to be seen down from there. This particular thing is now so far back, it's not gonna have any impact on Snow Canyon Park. Is that correct?
These are on the east side of the highway.
I just want the public to be, to know that, that the initial impact report so far is intact.
That would be, it would have been the development agreement that was originally approved and the PD zone that was originally approved.
Thank you. Other questions?
As far as Winchester and the Ledges go, when you, when you look on the map, so many people in Winchester's are on ag property. And, but this seems far enough away from ag because we know whenever we put anything close to ag, even though ag was there first, people will moan and groan about cows and horses and goats and chickens and whatever else. Pigs. But I'll always, you know, the ag is there, but this development is, you know, if you pull up the map I'm looking at, is quite a bit of a distance away from Winchester, if you're looking at this map.
Yeah. It does meet the buffer requirement.
Yeah.
It's, well, as it was explained, there is a 100-foot buffer. Right. But that's what was required.
But your pigs were there first.
Yeah.
Yeah, they can't do anything about that.
They cannot do anything about that.
And this, and this council will back you up on that.
We would always back you up on that. I heard, I heard a rooster.
You what?
Two mornings ago, a rooster in my neighborhood.
Did you?
Cock-a-doodle-doo.
So, so just to clarify one thing, though, those people who will come in and buy already know the pigs are there. It's not like that we're gonna have them buy a house and then move the pigs in.
Block design.
Yeah.
Beware of the pigs.
We got pigs.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Pigs stink way worse than cows.
He has cows.
Mayor, I just want to note that I heard no objections or anything real questions as to the short-term rentals. The amenities that are required for short-term rentals are all met.
They were already met, as I understand it.
They're already met, so.
And approved.
I was concerned some of the folks maybe had some issues with short-term rentals, but I hear none.
I, I think we do want to acknowledge that there was a hard copy distributed to the council. There was a concern expressed there and that's gonna be included in the record-
Right.
-for the meeting.
Thank you.
But Carol, if I understood right, that, those, that use was already approved. Is that correct?
The bonus to this is, we're actually, some of this area is getting even lower density than was originally planned.
Yeah.
So, I think we need to kind of realize that as we talk about this. This is already an approved zone. They're just making some amendments that, quite frankly, I think I, I like better. It gives us some lower-density units. There is open space there. That, that's the whole idea here, is we're gonna put a little higher density in some places to preserve some open space in the other areas, and that's kind of the way I, the way I see that. I understand the concerns from Winchester, but as far as I'm concerned and the council's concerned, I think that, you know, there should be no, no, no idea from the residents moving into these areas that they can do anything to change what happens in Winchester. And, and I stand behind that because those, you know, they were there first and they should be able to continue on with that lifestyle, which I happen to enjoy myself, and with, without being hindered. And I think we've tried to do a pretty good job with this council to make sure that that's clear, is that those people need to know what they're moving in next to and that they, that they should know that they're not gonna come and complain to city offices and get anybody to listen. So, that being said, I'm good with it.
Anyone have any other questions, otherwise ready for a motion if you're so inclined?
Excuse me, may I make another comment, please?
Well, the public hearing's been closed, but I will allow it if you'd like to just make it brief.
I, I don't quite understand one, one thing here. The area that has been built already that's along the highway where there's 35, almost 36 acres, and they put in 154 units, if you look at that area, it's really quite crowded. And yet, they're gonna put 187 units on 20 acres. And to me, I don't see how that can be done and still put the roads in and do the other things that need to be done on 20 acres because they're, they're doubling the amount of billing on, on this land. And to me, it's, I, I don't see how that can happen, but that's my opinion.
Well, they've drawn it out, so I think it's, that's the concept that's being considered. Stacy, do you want to respond to that?
Yeah, I can maybe address that just a little bit. Let me see if I can. So, the, the, the main, the main part of the explanation is that these are much smaller units. So, as you guys, it's a hot water cooler topic around St. George and the St. George area about nightly rentals and how many are being added to the market and so forth. We watch those numbers as well. The Escapes units average around four bedrooms per, per unit. They're 1,700 to 2,800 square feet, basically. These units will be about half that. They'll be closer to two bedrooms per, per unit and, you know, 1,000 to 2,000 square feet, more or less. So, the, the main answer in terms of how you can fit more units on the same amount is because they're smaller. Just quickly to go through this, I mean, if you look at the amount of, of coverage of the, of the land, of the, of the total 21 acres, we're actually only covering four acres of it with improvements. And so, the, the balance is parking, landscaping, et cetera. So, that's, that's kind of the further explanation.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mayor, unless Jimmy wants to make the motion, I'd go, I'd go ahead and make it. You want to, Jimmy?
You're fine.
Okay, I'd make a motion, Mayor, that we approve a zone change amendment for the Ledges residential plan development for, for a vacation rental project to redistribute the densities and for minor topographical and clerical corrections.
With the recommendations of Planning Commission?
With the recommendations of Planning Commission.
I will second that, and I would love to see you get a big sign that says Beware of Pigs, because I haven't seen a Beware of Pigs sign before, but I think that, you know, I think we need one.
Sounds kind of fun.
Beware of Pigs, so, yeah, I'll second it.
We have a motion by Ed and a second by Michelle. Any discussion by the Council on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, starting with Ed, say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously, and thank you. Appreciate everyone being here. Appreciate your attentiveness to it and the input. Number four, Ray.
Mayor, Council, number four. It's a public hearing in consideration of an ordinance for a zone change amendment to Sun River Commons Commercial Center to develop an office building in Phase III. So, I can go through this, Mayor and Council, but I'll kind of cut the chase real quick. You have seen this, you have approved it for a two-story building. It, it's come back because they'd like to change it to a three-story building. Planning Commission reviewed it. They had some comments on the colors and materials, and there's a brand-new material board behind Councilwoman Randall on the floor, and I'll show it in the slides, but I'll kind of quickly go through this. But basically, that is what's proposed. So, on the screen shows the site near Interstate 15. You've seen it before. Again, it's commercial, general plan, plan development, commercial zone. This is the site plan. This shows the building. Instead of two-story now, it'd be three-story here. And two-dimensional representation of what the elevations would look like. And here's the rendering of what the mayor just was holding up on the color and materials board. And all four sides of it, you can see the articulation. And this is just a view at night. So, this is the materials board that was brought to Planning Commission. They thought the colors were too close, so the applicant returned, and this is the one the mayor was holding up. It's got a little more variety and as a result of talking to Planning Commission. So, that's kind of a quick presentation rather than dwell on a lot of detail. That is what is requested.
Ray, I just need to see, is this working? I just need to see which side of that building will face the freeway.
I can't figure it out.
Okay, let's go back to here. I believe, both the same. This is a view. I think this is facing away from the freeway. You can see the hills here in the background.
So. Didn't really, it's that, well.
This is front. Sorry, Joe. I'm hearing John saying same elevation both ends.
One on the bottom?
East.
View to the east.
View to the southeast.
That's looking from the west to the east.
Right.
If you looked at it from the freeway, it'd be from the east to the west.
Right. View to the southeast, though, that's just looking towards the state line.
So you've got north here, south here, east over here. And that one said it's going from southeast, so let's look at that again.
But it says two, like Joe says.
So the, the side facing east and the freeway, they're mirrored, and so they look exactly the same. And so it's.
Side facing the east is what that says?
And so this view to the east, it would be duplicated on the other side. So it'll, it'll look like it has two fronts on both sides.
Okay.
I'm sure you guys have taken care of this because you always do, but the parking has changed, apparently. Going three-story instead of two.
Needed a little more.
Well, it's a three-story building and it's about eight thousand square foot per level, so you've got twenty-four thousand on page two. We've divided it by two-fifty, which is a standard. Ninety-seven spaces are required, and from what we've seen, they have ninety-seven provided. We'll triple-check it during the site plan review, but it, it seems to meet it.
Thank you, Joe. Any other questions, council?
Ray, I kind of expect to see a request for more three-story buildings as time progresses here in the city. Did they state why? They want to go to, exactly why?
I don't have, I don't have an answer for that.
Maximize their commercial investment, is there a reason?
I, I don't have a good answer for you. I, I seem to recall the applicant saying.
We'll let the applicant speak in a minute, and he can answer that.
I think the, the answer we got is it didn't pencil out for two.
We haven't heard, we haven't heard anything from Sun River residents on this one.
Yeah.
Right.
At the Planning Commission meeting, I don't recall any opposition.
Right up there by the freeway, so it's a pretty good placement.
And again, I'm sorry to be repetitive, this has been seen and was approved, and I don't remember when it was before, council before any opposition, so.
Very good.
Sorry about the confusion on the directions here.
It's all right. Any, if there are no other questions for staff, allow the applicant to just make any response to that question about the height efficiency, basically.
Yeah, Clark Kelsey with Sun River Commons. Yeah, it was just a matter of economics. When we had the two-story, we thought we were pretty close, but we really couldn't in the end make it pencil, so that was why we bumped it up to the three-story. It was just simple economics. Is there any other questions?
Any other questions for the applicant or anything else you'd like to say, Clark?
No, thank you.
All right, I'll open the public hearing for anyone who may have come to provide input or ask questions on this item. Number four on our agenda.
My name's Curly Carey. I live in Sun River. And I did not make it to the Planning Commission meeting where they changed it to a three-story. Because of where it's at, the only thing it will do is block my, part of my view of the freeway and watching the drug bust, which is quite fun. One of the comments that I made at the Planning Commission meeting, the public hearing, for the two-story building is I know that the city council has approved a sign ordinance, a master sign ordinance for the Sun River Commons, the whole area. As a resident, it would be very nice to see how that's, that whole master plan fits into each building as it's being planned, so that there isn't a big question when all of a sudden they start putting signs up on these buildings. With the Hampton, the most glaring thing is a sign. With Terrible, the most glaring thing is a sign. And I just think it'd be better for the residents as these are going forward, if we could see how the sign ordinance that you've passed is going to develop into this whole common area. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Ray, would you care to address the sign issue?
I can address sign issue. I didn't bring anything with me tonight, but you might recall a master sign plan was approved for that whole area. And that was for the size of the monument signs and how many and how many pole signs. This tonight is non-approval for signage. Any signage on a building or any of these buildings would fall under a sign permit, and it would follow whatever the code is for any commercial building. We can provide to the public if they come and show them the master sign plan for the whole area, but that, again, was just how many monuments and where they'd be located and their heights.
With, part of his question may have been, you know, I mean, is there, if one of those signs were to be, one of those pre-approved, if you will, signs were to be a part of this property, is that, is that part of what you were asking? So is that, is that possible for us to, not now, obviously, but if there is one on this property, could that be shown, provided by the applicant to the city and to the public if they're interested in seeing that?
I don't see why not.
Having remembered a wee bit, I think the question is more of what signs going on the building.
And that's what I was trying to address.
As opposed to the monument sign and the other little signs.
So they'll just have to comply with the, the face of it and the maximum allowed square footage, just like any other building. We, we don't, we don't look at that at Planning Commission and council.
In terms of the sign on the building?
Right.
So were you interested in both, what's seen on the building and what's on the ground?
Typically, yes, because if you look at Terrible, it's both the monument sign and the signs on the building. You can see the both, which, if I were in business, that's what I would want to accomplish. And I don't have any idea what kind of business they're doing, going into an office. But if they're going to have these type of letters, I know it'd be, it'd be nice to be able to.
See, and the issue is, at this point, we don't know either, and neither does the applicant. So that's why there is kind of a separate part of the ordinance that deals with that. There's not. That's not required. When we change the, if we are, if there are problems, I mean, you can, you know, certainly request to the council. We don't like the sign ordinance, you know? If you want to say that, it's certainly something that could be teed up in terms of generally speaking, if they're different, you'd like to see different materials or, you know, uses, so forth. It could be changed, but typically, we, you know, we use that so we can apply it, and you, you'd see a fairly consistent, you know, treatment, if you will, across the city.
I find it interesting that so much time, particularly in the planning commission meetings, is devoted to colors and design and style, then all of a sudden, the sign just goes away. That's how it appears.
Sure. And my understanding is also, though, those colors and all that other thing really are being approved by the Planning Commission and the city council, but the signs follow the sign ordinance that's already in place. Is that true, John?
Yeah. Yeah, it's just hard, because you've got, when you've got businesses, you know, they all have logos, they all have colors. And so within reason, we try to make things work so that they can be successful, you know? We're, and so that's why it's, it's a little harder to do, especially at this stage. And, and so we, we do it as the businesses come with that sign permit. But, good question, and hope that at least provides a little clarity. All right, council, any other questions, discussion, otherwise ready for a motion? I already closed the public hearing, yeah.
I will make a motion for a zone change amendment to the Sun River Commons Commercial Center to develop an office building in Phase Three.
I have a motion by Michelle and a second by Joe. Any discussion? All in favor, starting with Betty this time, say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everyone.
Next item on the agenda is item five. Public hearing in consideration of an ordinance for a zone change amendment for Quarry Ridge Commercial to develop in two phases, commercial buildings with an undeveloped area for a future third phase. So the property which I'll show in just a moment has previously been zoned PDC, Plan Development Commercial. I don't remember how many years ago that was. I'd have to look it up. But at that time, the point I'm trying to make is there was a use list that ran with the land, so there's no request tonight for a different use, and the use is before you here for your reference. The Planning Commission did look at it and didn't have any suggestions on any changes. This blue arrow is pointing right in here, which is the area. Here's Horseman's Park Drive, and for reference up here is River Road, and then you can see the river here behind the property. This shows the APN, property description. This shows the general plan. The property's outlined in this turquoise color. And you can see low-density residential and floodplain area. The zoning, again, is Plan Development Commercial. That's already there. It's just, there's never been a project proposed for this site. The floodway information is here, which is the white line, and you can see how that's going in the property. Erosion hazard and hundred-year flood. Now, in my case file, I didn't give a copy to you, but I do have it here. Since this, and I don't think this accurately reflects, a CLOMAR has been done. I think that's certified letter of map revision by FEMA. And so I might be able to show you a line on another drawing here. They've got a little bit more land that they can actually develop in here. So staff, and especially our engineers, are sensitive to monitor where they're proposing the buildings and what you'll see comply with that CLOMAR, so it wouldn't be in a floodplain, it wouldn't be in a river area. And I actually, this is a little hard for me to read, but it's a hundred-year floodway, twenty-eighteen CLOMAR, so this kind of shows the revised area, which means they gain this land in here, and this is where I'll show you, they want to put two buildings. And then this third area, it doesn't look at this time to be developable for the future, so that's not what's before you. And that's this orange area here, it just says future development. They're asking to do two buildings here. It's called Phase One, Phase Two. And they'd like to have approval on the Plan Development Commercial Zone Amendment to have you look at these two and approve them and the associated driveways and parking, but again, leaving out this area. This shows a rendering for Building One. It's an elevation fitness, although it's not really mentioned in the report, but this is what the applicant has submitted, so it looks like a health club. And then these are two-dimensional elevations going all the way around the building. And then this shows the height, the flat roof, twenty-eight feet. And then we have a rendering of Building Two. That would be Phase Two to come in. And it shows the articulation and the cultured stone for it. And then the elevations, all four elevations, so you can look all around the building. And Joe, this one's a little easier for me to answer, when we've got east, west, north, south. Then the other one, that threw me a little bit. Sorry about that.
The good part is that all four renders, all good.
Staff felt that they did, and Planning Commission supported that. So here's the, again, the height on Building Two. And it's really, the majority is twenty-eight feet if you follow the arrow, but you've got this higher point that goes up to maximum of thirty-one, which is below, typically, we try to look at buildings below thirty-five unless they have a conditional use permit or a zone change amendment. Here is materials and color board. I think it's on the floor behind the mayor, the actual board itself. So Planning Commission does recommend approval. Sorry, I take a minute here. This is to develop two office buildings. The first one is about seventeen thousand square foot. The second is twelve thousand square feet. I'm jumping to page three. The Planning Commission does recommend approval. I won't read all of these, but there are thirteen conditions. Most of them are standard, and the first one just talks about the use list. They recommend approval of that. Item two and three talk about Phase One and Two, Building One and Two. Four, they wanted to note for the record that Phase Three would remain undeveloped. That'd have to come back in the future. It wouldn't be approving that tonight if you approve it. Five addresses landscaping. Six, site plan review, civil engineering review. Seven, they'd have to do the roadways that are required, comply with master road plan, comply with setbacks, comply with parking, comply with lighting, height, erosion protection. And then thirteen is added BFE, which is base flood elevation of the structure, that it has to be twelve inches above the base flood elevation, which is established by FEMA. So I think I've covered the majority of it, and that concludes staff's comments.
Ray, just a question, and I think I probably know this, but I'll clarify it. The roadway that's going to be improved on their side of the road, will that go down into the part that has just left open space right now? Does the roadway have to go all the way to cover the entire property?
They're showing this kind of shaded gray. My first response is they'd be, they'd be improving from here to here. I'm not quite positive about this area, although they're showing a landscape and they're showing it gray. That, John, I don't know if they have an answer since Wes is not here, but we'll definitely look at that.
Alan might know.
He's nodding his head, yes.
Thank you.
So that should answer it.
So, Ray, when you mentioned the, the three phases, it's my understanding that the applicants intend to move forward ASAP, pretty quick in building that health club on this site. Is that?
You know, Alan could probably answer. I'm not sure about that, but this is the one that they do want to build, and it.
That would be the health club, right?
Looks pretty serious because that is the health club rendering that you saw.
Good questions. Any others? Anything from the applicant you'd like to say, or applicants representatives? Okay. John?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention one, one item. If you notice, there's a reconfiguration. This Horseman's Park would, would be Quarry Ridge, and that's actually continuing down, and it would actually make a T-intersection. So this portion here would be Horseman Park. This reconfiguration, so now this Horseman Park comes down this way and continues up to three thousand east. And so with this, you can see this configuration of Quarry Ridge would come down here, and then this road here would be Horseman Park, which would tee in.
Close, more of a ninety degree, yeah.
It'll be widened out. So it'll, it'll be expanded out to its full, its full width in this area. I'm not sure over on this side, but they will improve their portion here.
Okay, so what happens right there where your arrow is, again, just so we're clear?
So Horseman, Horseman Park, which is what's Horseman Park.
Right.
Will continue, and it'll be Quarry Ridge, and it'll continue down.
Continue, then there will be a turn.
So this will continue south.
Okay.
Horseman Park will tee in to Quarry Ridge.
Okay. So is your question whether there'll be a turning lane there? Is that what your question is?
We'll just confirm about, right now, the road to the, to the, is, has been widened.
I don't think there's a turn lane or decal lane, is there? But this will be... Right. What's the full right-of-way planned, is this a four-lane?
I believe it is, we'd have to verify, I know up here at River Road it is, and so I'm assuming that'll just continue down. This is a master plan road, this Quarry Ridge, and so is Horseman, and it's wider than what it is now. Yes, you can see this is a 66, and this is a wider here.
So it'll be widened to its required width at that point, on that side?
They'll do their improvements.
Right. And that's how we do it typically, when the developer develops their property, we have them pay for the cost of widening the road to the full width on that side.
So that will probably put a stop sign there, which is now a speed turn. Yeah, there'll be a stop sign coming from the east, down by the pickleball court.
Has this had a lot of public input into, because it is a crazy place right there, especially when people are pulling off and on for the athletic events that go on there?
They won't be able to park there like they have.
Yeah.
So again, as John showed, this, the green is showing how it would continue on, this becomes Quarry Road, and then this is Horseman's. Which is here.
Yep.
I'm seeing a T here.
That's correct. That's correct.
Would think so.
It would have to be.
But even with the development of this project, Quarry Road is not continuing on right now, I mean, they're stopping right there at the T, basically.
For now.
So it'll still just be a free flow of traffic for now? Okay.
Probably pretty short-lived, right? I mean, this will probably, that road...
Yeah, that's budgeted.
That's budgeted for this fiscal year. Yeah. So yeah, it's changing. Any other questions? I don't think I've opened the public hearing. I'll open the public hearing for any who've come to offer input on this, we've already had some questions, but if there are any others, you're welcome to do it. We're just so easygoing. I'll close the public hearing and come back to you, counsel, for any other questions, discussion, or comments.
Did we answer the questions?
Is it Natalie?
Yeah.
I can't see tonight for some reason, and you look like Natalie. Did you get your questions answered? All right, thanks, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, a lot of health club activities, a lot of exercising, just fits right in with that whole...
Right now, the exercise you get is not getting run over going down through there.
Okay.
Are you ready?
Ready for motion if you are.
I think I am. I'm ready to...
Second.
Say that you'll approve the consideration of an ordinance for a zone change for Quarry Ridge Commercial to develop two phases with an undeveloped area left over. Is that close?
Close enough.
Second.
We have a motion by Joe, second by Jimmy, any discussion on the motion? All in favor, starting with Ed this time, say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. All right, move forward.
Items Six and Seven, as you know, have been pooled, they were hillside permits, be on a future, so we'll be jumping to item eight, which is a conditional use permit, let me read that from the applicant, from the agenda. Consider approval of a conditional use permit to allow construction of approximately 16 feet, three-inch-high RV garage at 720 West Indian Hills Drive. So here's an aerial view, the yellow shows what is outside of the city, but on Indian Hills Drive here, just to the northeast of it, is a property, you can see there are no immediate neighbors, the old airport, which is now Tech Ridge, is up above it. This shows the zoning, R110, and this shows the general plan, that has some low-density and some open space in the area. A close-up aerial of the site, and then getting even closer, and then a good bird's-eye view. I'll let the applicant confirm, but my understanding is the garage that's requested will go right in here. I'll show a couple photos of street views, but in reality, as you're going by Indian Hills, I don't think the public would even see it up here, and then there's no neighbor that is close to it. And then even closer view of it. So in the site plan I'll show you in a moment, this is what's called existing garage, which is right here, and then this is the new proposed RV garage. And a close-up of that, it's about 18 feet by 46, pretty typical size, what we're used to seeing. This is the Carter residence. And these are the elevations, this shows the west side and the front, which is the north, the rear, which would just be solid, south side and then the east side. And then that was what was seen at the Planning Commission, then the applicant cleaned up and had the architect do a little more eligible elevations, but they really give the same information, you can see, this would be the front, the north driving in, just a basic RV garage. Floor plan, you can see there's nothing planned inside of it. So going through the height calculations, it comes out to 16 foot three, 18 foot six was the highest, but we measure it midpoint. And then these are the street views that I talked about, going down Indian Hill, kind of going in a south direction. And here's the home hidden back behind the pines, and it would be up in here somewhere, I don't think you'd see it, I haven't been on the property, but... Other than that, Planning Commission does recommend approval with findings, because this is a conditional use permit, and there's a lot of data in the staff report about setbacks and all, but I won't read that. And again, Planning Commission recommends approval.
Questions, counsel, for Ray? I think under our revised ordinance, these wouldn't come to us in the future, correct, Sean?
Hallelujah.
Well, maybe not today, but soon. Any questions, if not, ready for motion?
Maybe we should deny one, because we've just never denied one.
If you had been to the Planning Commission meeting, you wouldn't be saying that right now.
But I would vote that we don't deny this one, we can deny another one.
Is that a motion?
Second.
I think that was a motion. Go ahead.
I would move that we approved this conditional use permit for extra height on a RV storage unit on Indian Hills Drive.
Second.
Did it need it for extra height? Is that what it needed? Or just because it's an...
Because of extra height.
And because it's owned by Gary Carter, which means that it's extra tall.
Yeah. So I will just make sure that the conditional use permit approval would include for the extra height.
Okay. You had the motion by Joe and second by Ed, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Gary, good luck. Thank you.
You bet.
Next item is another conditional use permit, item nine. Consider approval of a conditional use permit to allow construction of approximately 17 foot, three-inch-high RV garage on Lot 27 in the Crimson Cliffs Phase Two Residential Subdivision. This is an aerial view to show here is the property's outline, just for reference, 3,000 East is over here. The zoning is shown, RE 12.5, and then the general plan, low-density residential. And this is the property, and basically where I'm showing here with the arrow back in this corner, this southwest corner is where they'd like to put the RV garage. This shows the site plan, this shows the home, this shows the setbacks, but as you know, an accessory building can encroach into those setbacks. And they propose to have a pool there, sports court, and what I'm trying to point out here is they want to build a garage, but attached to the garage have a covered patio area so that they can use it in the summer for in and out of the pool and shade and barbecues and such. This exhibit's been updated since the Planning Commission meeting, and they had, it has a small loft in it, and that's just fantomed in there for you to see, pretty much if you pulled a car or truck in at the nose of the vehicle, you'd have a little ledge to put items on for storage, and then they just changed the windows here since Planning Commission dropped them down. The height is shown, 17 foot three, this is the north elevation, as you drive past the residence and drive back that corner of the lot, here's the covered patio area that would be for the pool. And then this just shows the main floor plan, driving into the garage, the covered patio, and then yellow was the area for storing items. This shows a view from the street. Here's where you'd be driving back, they'll have to improve that, that's a condition put, recommended by Planning Commission, as we do on all garages, to have it paved. And that pretty much concludes staff's comments, it is recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. There are some comments from staff on page three, I won't read those unless you want me to, and then at the beginning, the bottom of page three is the findings, because it's a conditional use permit, and item G for height is detached RV garage will be approximately 17 feet, three inches high, and that concludes the comments.
So the Planning Commission required changes to the elevation of the windows, is that right?
Yes.
Do we care about that? Just wondering.
Well, it depends on how much you care about it, typically, we would see a window like this here, you know, if you're a work bench or you're getting illumination inside, the concern the Planning Commission had is they didn't want them high, they didn't want to feel like it created the feel of a second story, although, if you look around the community, you can find situations where they are high like that, so...
Well...
The applicant did adjust it.
What did the applicant want?
Yeah, I mean, whatever, I mean, to me, if the council's so inclined, I think they could do it the way they had it originally planned.
Agreed.
I don't care, it's a garage.
Well, I think what the Planning Commission was nervous about is the second story, but to me, the lights are for the loft anyway.
Yeah. I think it helps with your lighting. But that's up to the, that's up to this council. Don't need one on this one.
Well, I move, so moved to the mayor's statement about it.
So it's approved, and if you want to have the elevations of the windows be higher the way you had them before, you're okay with that, Betty?
Yes, I am.
And so am I, second.
You have a motion by Betty, with the second by Michelle, now, any comments, any discussion?
Just the size of those homes out there, you won't even notice this garage.
Well, we've talked about that before, too, is, I guess the ordinance says we can't have a second story and a detached garage, but I'm not so sure why we have that even.
Agreed.
We're working on that, too.
Yeah.
So now my question is, and I like the motion and the second, but now that he's supplied that, can we waive that through our vote?
Yes, we can.
Thank you.
So it's up to you, you can do it either way, the way it's presented here, or the way you presented it at Planning Commission. Okay? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Have fun. Thanks.
Joy living in St. George.
Guys are renegades, man, going all over the place. Free-for-all.
Okay.
Okay, Carol, welcome.
You ready for the speed round? I'm Wes.
Welcome back. Oh, you're Wes, oh.
I'm Wes. I get down a little bit shorter. Okay, this is item number 10, to consider approval of a preliminary plat for Hidden Pinion at the Ledges, Phase Three, this is for a 14-lot residential subdivision located north on Hidden Pinion Drive, north of Hidden Pinion Phase Two, and the zoning is Plan Development Residential, PDR. Here's aerial location, it's just north of the existing Hidden Pinion Development, just adding on some more lots to this. They will have, this, north is this way, so this side backs up against the golf, and this side has some open space that will be part of the HOA. Did present this to the Planning Commission, there was just one condition, that a note be on the plat, on the final plat, talking about the hazardous location being their general location to the golf course. I can't, having a hard time getting my words out.
You did.
But, yeah, they recommended approval, so if you have any questions on this, be happy to answer.
Questions, counsel? Otherwise, ready for a motion?
Motion to approve the preliminary plat for the Hidden Pinion at the Ledges, Phase Three.
Second.
Motion by Michelle with a second by Ed, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, item number 11, to consider approval of a preliminary plat for Snow Canyon Commercial. This is for a three-lot commercial subdivision located north on Dixie Downs Road, south of 2,000 North Street, and west of Snow Canyon Parkway, the zone is Plan Development Commercial, and this will, the total acreage is 8.01 acres. Here's the general location, this has just recently had their zone change, this is what they want to do, it's kind of hard to see, let's see, there's three lots, and we've got one here, and then this one, the line is supposed to go over here, so this is the second one, and then the third one is just right here. There will, we will be requiring, there's entrance here off of 2,000 North, and then they'll have an entrance as well, it'll be around, it'll be over here somewhere for Dixie Downs, we're proposing, staff is proposing that a cross-access easement be available for all lots to be able to get in and out any direction. And then also, so the recommendation for, from the Planning Commission was for that cross-access easement, and also for a storm drainage easement that is on the lot, that it will be dedicated to the city.
And just to clarify on the storm drain easement, it's, the storm drain's existing, and John, if I remember correctly, the storm drain goes along Snow Canyon Parkway and then down, turns down Dixie Downs and goes that way, so they'll have to dedicate all of those to the city, okay? That would need to be part of the motion.
And those were the, and so those were the, what would you call those, utility easements or drainage?
There's an existing line there, when the plat was originally recorded, it said on the plat, there was a note that an easement would be recorded, but no easement was recorded at that time, and we became aware of that when Hart's...
So what kind of easement?
Let's do the, let's do a public utility easement, but what I want, or, yeah, public utility easement, which will change in the new law to a municipal utility easement, what I want to make sure, John, is that we have it wide enough because of the size of that storm drain, that it will encompass the storm drain...
It's a big one.
Along with the, any other utilities that would need to go in there.
Okay, counsel, any questions?
Yeah, it's, yeah, okay, this, okay, this is the location of the gas station, this is the first one right here, it's the largest one, this second one starts down here, comes up, comes up to Snow Canyon, comes down here, and then at this point, where these utility lines are, it comes over.
That's so it gets its access.
What's that?
The middle one is with that additional part of the lot.
Yes, yes.
And that's to get the access?
Well, yeah, I mean, they, they all have access to the public right away, there will be that cross-access easement so that it can get to all three lots, no matter which direction you're coming from. So, yeah, that does give it access off of Two Thousand. Does that make sense? Okay.
Where's the traffic signal light up there on Snow Canyon?
Isn't there one on Dixie Downs? Yeah.
We'll need another one.
That's one of the ones that actually we've talked about. Hope we'll get done one of these days. Cameron?
Yeah.
Any other questions? Otherwise, be ready for a motion, but as the city attorney mentioned, we ought to include, if you're so inclined to approve this, that we add the public utility easement along the location of the.
Storm drain.
Yes, along Snow Canyon, where the storm drain line is. There will be, we'll require the public utility easements on all four corners of each property, but we wanted to make sure, because that line is existing, that it's in there and it's at a sufficient width to, so that they can get in repair if they need to.
So moved.
Okay. Michelle makes the motion, seconded by Betty, to approve this preliminary plat and make sure that the, all the regular and the, the additional public utility easements are a part of this approval.
And recorded.
And recorded. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Twelve.
Okay, item number twelve, this is to consider an approval of the preliminary plat for Sun River Commons, phase three. This is a one lot commercial subdivision, and it's located east of Pioneer Parkway, north of Sun River Parkway, and west of I fifteen. The zoning is P D C, Plan Development Commercial. And the lot, you actually just approved the, the building that will be going up on this lot, it's one point six zero acres, oops, let me get to the location here, just right over here, Terrible Hurts, and that's the location. And here's the plat. This, this is the circular drive that will have access to all of these lots back here. This, this part is part of this plat, so it'll be extended beyond Terrible Hurts all the way up to here.
Ready for a motion?
Move to approve the preliminary plat for Sun River Commons, phase three.
Second.
Motion by Betty, second by Jimmy. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Fourteen, right, John?
Fourteen.
Okay.
Final plats. Consider approval of a final subdivision plat for Desert Crossing, phase, phase two. This is a final subdivision plat for thirteen lot residential subdivision, it's located on Daydream Way, and it's located down in the desert color area. They are zone P D R, which has a five thousand, sorry, it's this one. There we go. It has a five thousand square foot lot minimum, and they're, most of these are closer to between nine to fourteen thousand square feet, and so they're a lot larger. They do have this open space here located here, which these lots actually look down into that area. Planning commission does recommend approval of this final plat.
Questions, council?
Motion to approve the final subdivision plat for Desert Crossing, phase two.
Motion by Michelle and a second by Joe, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The next item, item number fifteen, consider approval of a final subdivision plat for Desert View, phase two. This is located just north of the one we just looked at. It's in desert color, it's a, or desert canyon. It's a nine lot residential subdivision. This is also a P D, and so they have five thousand square foot lot minimum, but these are much larger than the five thousand square feet. There is these two lots here, which is a flag lot, and so there will need to be easements that allow each one of these lots to access over the, the adjacent proper, the adjacent flag. Planning commission did recommend approval on this item.
Questions on this one?
John, it's the, the water, that item we put off on, on that eight inch water line, that'll serve this particular area so they'll have the water pressure they need there at this, at this particular site, right?
This, this particular subdivision's down in the desert canyon, and so it's quite a bit further south than that, that hillside.
So it's good.
Yep.
Thanks for clarification. Any other questions? Ready for a motion on this final subdivision plat?
Move to approve the final subdivision plat for Desert View, phase two.
Motion by Betty, second by Michelle. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Next item, item number seventeen, consider approval of a final subdivision plat for Maple Estates, phase four. This is Coppercliffs Drive located here, and so Three Thousand comes, comes and changes names to Coppercliffs, and this is Banded Hills located here, so it's right in that corner. This is a twenty lot subdivision, it's zone R one eight. There is this portion located behind the lots that they are dedicated to the city to accommodate for a future trail. Planning commission does recommend approval on this, on this final plat.
Any questions on this one?
I'll make a motion that we approve the final subdivision plat for Maple Estates, phase four.
Second.
Motion by Joe, second by Jimmy. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Next item, item number eighteen, consider approval of a final subdivision plat for Moreland Park, phase two. This is, this is a seventeen lot residential subdivision, they're zone R one ten. This is just kind of north of fourteen fifty, really close to, well, it's more approaching Lynn's. Three Thousand East is located here. They are R one ten, and they do meet all of the provisions for R one ten. Planning commission recommends approval on this final plat.
Questions on this one? All, ready for a motion then?
Motion to approve the final subdivision plat for Moreland Park, phase two.
Second.
Motion by Michelle with a second by Ed. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously.
Next item, item number nineteen, consider approval of a final subdivision plat for Sage Canyon, phase three subdivision. This is located down in Southern Hills, so if you look at this city map, this is Southern Parkway located here, this is River Road, and it's, it's off in this area here. It's, it's zone R one ten, it's for a twenty-four lot residential subdivision. It does meet all the provisions and, and all the ordinances. Planning commission reviewed it and recommended approval.
I have a question for Jimmy. What's a yant?
Yeah, I was looking at that. I know what a hay rock is, but I don't know what yant flat.
I know what a hay rock is, too, but do you, all the rest of you?
You what?
Do you know what a hay rock?
She knows what a hay rock is, but not a yant.
Yant, I don't know what a yant.
But I don't think you know what a hay rock is, either.
Yeah, I know.
What's a hay rock?
A hay rock is a rock that the rancher puts, as he's heading out to the strip, he puts hay on top of it so that animals and things won't get it, and then on his way back out, he has feed for his cattle, horses.
I did.
He, he taught, his mother taught.
You put the hay up there so the yants won't get him.
That is good. Gil.
Oh, that's great. What is a yant? A yant is the Thai name for yantra, a sacred geometrical design used on cloth, metal, and cement.
Wow.
Huh. Well, meanwhile, back at the ranch.
Meanwhile, back at the ranch, I will approve the subdivision plat for Sage Canyon, phase three. Second.
Motion by Michelle, who got the second? Second by, second by Joe. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say yant? I mean, no. Motion is approved unanimously. Number twenty.
Item number twenty, consider approval of a final subdivision plat for White Sands, phase four B subdivision. So this is located in the same area, just east of the one we just considered, and this is for an eight lot subdivision, it's zone R one ten. It does meet all the conditions and approval of the preliminary plat, and planning commission recommends approval.
Questions on this one? Dwarf bear, we were just wondering if that's politically correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion to approve the final subdivision plat for White Sands, phase four B.
Second.
Motion by Jimmy, second by Betty. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Item number twenty-one, consider approval of an amended final subdivision plat for Painted Desert Professional Plaza. So this is a commercial, this is a commercial subdivision that they're amending, there's, there's two portions to this amendment. There were a couple buildings here that were built off of the pad, and so they're modifying the pad to, to match the building. The second is, these two buildings here, they've, they've reconfigured those to address, to address the site distance here, and so we're, we've looked at the site distance and we've kind of pulled these buildings back in order to accommodate the site distance, and there's no buildings yet built on these two pads.
The buildings at the top are already built.
Yes.
Yep.
Yep. Planning commission, planning commission reviewed it and recommended approval for this amended final plat.
Questions on this one, council? We, we know where this one is.
It's by Jimmy.
Yeah. Motion, motion to approve the final amended subdivision plat for Painted Desert Professional Plaza.
Motion by Jimmy, second by Michelle. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I don't have any appointments. I believe, Betty, that I've got, someone wants me to add, I think it was someone to the museum board, so I'll work with you on that.
And I just would like to report that the Soup and Bowl was wonderful.
Was.
And I think more people than ever, the mayor came, and Sean McAfee was there and just did a tremendous job of helping the committee, and.
He's always very supportive, isn't he? Shame.
The music was fantastic. You really ought to come sometime, it's great.
They had the Vista Orchestra again, right? It's fantastic. It was, there were tons of people there.
Yeah.
Hope they made lots of money for the arts museum.
Thank you, too.
Any other reports, council? We will not need a closed session tonight, correct, Adam and Sean? So, any, any reports from any other committees? I'm not really aware of much in the last little bit.
Did you, did you report on the transportation fair in an earlier time? That was a tremendous success, too.
Yeah, it was, well attended.
Huge, huge success.
Yeah, lots of people came, not, maybe quite as many it seems like as last year, but it was close. Sean's been very active, and I have as well, in the legislature, Adam has been, other than for the last few days. But you might have heard that the, or the House tax bill, four forty-one, has been pulled and will no longer be considered this session. Now, they do plan to ask the governor for a special session to consider it, but that's better than what we had because it was just too much, too fast, very sweeping, far-reaching, was going to have enormous impact on businesses. That's kind of what was going on, so.
Not our style.
Yeah, it's not Utah. So, if they have, if they have challenges, and I do think there are some challenges in terms of taxes on goods versus services, I think there are some challenges, but let's explain it, let's go through it, and let's look at all the solutions and, and try to remain friendly to business and, and cities, frankly. And they were going to be, I think, more friendly to us, we'd been working hard on that bill. There are a few others we'll tell you about later when the session's over, when we know how they end up, but there's definitely, there are about three hundred bills that the League of Cities was watching, just that we were watching and taking positions on, and one of them involves retirement of public safety employees that will affect us if it passes fairly significantly. So we'll talk to you, we'll talk to you. Yep, tier two. So we'll talk about that, but we're, we're making the best deal we can on that, and we'll come back to you in terms of how Adam's going to suggest we fund it, and all those kinds of fun things, but there's a bill on the referendum process that won't be perfect, but it will be better, I think, than, than what it's been. Sean, any, any others? The, the housing bill hasn't passed yet, but we feel it's in a good place, better than where we thought it would be. The person, the legislator that was going to, we were afraid to amend it negatively, has at least assured us he will not. So we're in a good place at the moment. Sean, other things you'd say from bills you're weighing in on?
There are so many, you can't even comment on all of them. One of them, we've been working with Senator McKay and with some bond counsel is for a special, it's not a special assessment district, but the ability to create a district where one hundred percent of the property owners agree, and they assess themselves for public infrastructure, they can go out and bond for it, and they can turn around and dedicate that infrastructure to us. So we've got that in a place where we feel very comfortable about that, and it doesn't expose the city's bond rating or, or any of the collection actions that would be needed on the city, specifically on that.
I think, why not?
Infrastructure district. Yeah, it really seemed, it's a, it was, there was some opposition to it, but I liked the bill, quite frankly. We needed some changes to it, and their bond counsel that have been working with us have made those changes so that you, as the public entity, get to approve a governing document for that stating how the board is set up and some, and what the parameters are for the, it's not a service, but the infrastructure that will go in there, that type of thing. So I think it'll be a, it'll be a good opportunity for those who have a, a large piece of land to be able to finance the infrastructure it needs to go in.
So, does there have to be a minimum number of property owners?
Has to be, yes, a hundred percent.
No, I mean, I know the total, but it could be one or five hundred.
It has to be one hundred percent of the property owners and one hundred percent of any voters that live in that area. So that's why the bill is just designed to say, you and I have a thousand acres between us and we want to put the infrastructure in, then we both have to agree, we can, we can form that going through the city, and once we get that governing document in place, then bonds can, they, we can go out and, on the bond market.
But they do it instead of us.
Yeah, they do it, and then they, they put in all of the, whatever the infrastructure is to our standards, and then they'll turn it over to us.
Another way to finance.
And no one's forced into it.
Yeah.
Good. I look forward to hearing the discussions on that one twenty-nine, Mayor, and any increasing contributions by the employees, police and fire.
That's the deal that's, that's the deal that we hope is going to be honored. Frankly, because the bill sponsor is, I think, and because the chief of the Bountiful Police Department is a really good guy, I, I, they're both outstanding people who've said, we'll, we'll lobby, if you will, for that, that option. They didn't have to, frankly, because they got it passed in the senate with, where we'd pay the full cost of this, this additional amount to their retirement. So we'll see where that ends up, Sean, won't we, but.
I think they, we know what our exposure would be maximum, and that would be four percent above the twelve percent cap right now.
It's going from twelve to sixteen, right?
To sixteen, that's right. And just for the record, the reason why he mentioned Chief Ross is because he's head of the Chiefs Association, because our chief is a good guy, too.
Our chief is the best guy, but Chief Ross is a great.
Chief Ross is a great.
Is a great guy.
He's a great guy.
And he's, anyway, there's lots of work left to be done, but let's see, what do we got? Five business days left in the session, so there's a chance we can come out of this okay. Any, any other updates or reports, folks, from your meetings?
Just to let you know, the dinosaur. Just to let you know, the Dinosaur Foundation Museum had another meeting, and.
Thanks, John, thanks, Carol.
They're putting forth their plan as to that area across the street, and the coverage and so forth, so I've asked them to make sure that they work with the Leisure Services Department, and, and that, that's presented to the city council, because I know you're concerned about it.
Is the chief going to put in a stoplight, or is the chief going to walk way over?
Stoplight, probably.
Sure.
There was a really funny comment on Facebook yesterday, we'll talk about.
Or a four-way stop.
Yeah, a four-way stop. But I did want to mention that next Thursday is a work, is a work meeting, it's a fairly, I think should be fairly brief one. I will not be here, and Michelle's going to be out of town as well. Is everyone else here? It's spring break, Jimmy?
No, I'm not. I'm actually in Arizona.
Well, you're here, but, I mean, you're going to be in Arizona?
I will be.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're down to, we're down to three.
I think any work can be done with us three.
Well, you won't have to work much. What's on the agenda is actually an update, isn't it, from, is it the Dinosaur Museum? And then also, Jeriah is doing an update from St. George area economic development.
I can represent the local.
Does that sound okay? All right, so, otherwise, we'll see you, we'll see you in the next regular meeting, in the case of the cup, three of us. Anything else that needs to come up before this group? Otherwise, I'd.
I'd just like to thank you, Mayor, I see the work going on, the signal light there at Medical Center Drive and.
Almost done.
And it's moving rapidly, and it's really got a lot of people happy. Signal lights.
Close to stop sign.
Yes, we're working on that, by the way, we're working on that, so we'll, we'll try to, we're going to have some communication as we resolve a couple things, we're doing a little bit of checking on a couple of options, but, you know, it's okay.
It's worth mentioning that next week, while school is out, 3,000 East will be completely closed to accommodate water line construction, so we're going to try to get that out tomorrow.
But I'm going to be gone.
It seemed like the best time to do it, I mean, it's not ideal to have to close it, but with school out.
Not the whole 3,000 East, though, just a.
But just a section.
Yeah.
So we'll have to reroute traffic, and.
I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
Adjourn. Okay, motion by Joe, second by Michelle, to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No one's opposed. Thank you. Motion carries, and we're adjourned.